Order in seven oh one, so the first thing we'll do is our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, Paul, I am your chair, and I begin, and I'll start with this side.
Vice Chair, Al Ford.
Secretary, Sherry Van White.
Number Patricia Dunn.
Justice Madam.
Recording Secretary Mary.
Jan Holmier, and John here here with us too. John, do you want to sit over there, or do you want to squeeze it over there?
Good.
Okay.
If you need me, I'll stand.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, everybody. So then, the next thing we're gonna honor is approval of our agenda or any modifications. Second. Matt Miller, motions first, Alun Baker, say aye. Aye. And, okay, no, sorry, Sherry's second. Right, we have several minutes to approve. We have our regular meeting minutes, our public hearing minutes for the DTE proposal, and our public hearing minutes for the trigger ordinance. So, the first one we're gonna do is our regular meeting minutes. Sherry approves for first, Matt seconds. Do I hear all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing meeting minutes for the DTE rezoning proposal. Matt first, Sherry second, Alun Baker, John, aye. And our final minutes to approve are the trigger ordinance for the clearing for the preo. Sherry approves for first. Okay, you second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Communications. You guys have any communications, anything? All right, I don't have any. First call to the public. You have three minutes to speak, you can give your minutes to somebody, but you need to tell me that ahead of time. Anyone want to say anything?
Tammy?
Oh, I do.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You have my three minutes.
Hopefully you'll be able to. So Tammy, hopefully you're going to address three questions tonight in the discussion during the DT application. One is, does the DT special land use application meet the township's ordinance, both Article fifteen and subsection F? And hopefully either you, Tammy, or Mike can chime in on that. Two, if it does, then are you in compliance and meet the requirements for the Michigan zoning on special land permits, one twenty-five point three five zero two? And if you do meet that requirement, then are you, do you have contemporaries documentation to ensure that we're covered under section one twenty-five, three, five, zero, six, which is in case someone wants to take you to court? So hopefully you'll address those three issues tonight. Thank you.
I only got two things written down. Did you guys get that from the lawyer? Just like, you got the gist of his question, it's probably later I will have you guys addressing that. Anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
I'd say ninety percent of the people in this township is against this rezoning. It's against the solar things, I don't know why they keep coming back here. You people work for us, we're supposed to vote the way the township people want.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to say something? Go ahead.
Not everybody is against it.
Yeah.
And they say that so many people aren't, but they really are not.
Ninety percent.
I find that subject to just, that you need to do a lot more checking.
Okay, okay, I just, I don't want, you guys, I don't, I want us all to be respectful of each other, I don't want to get heated. I understand, it's very emotional. So I'm just gonna please, like, keep, just address the meeting, and I will take it personally. Did you, were you done speaking, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Yes, unless you want to hear about.
Well, you got three minutes.
Green Lake Road got graded, and you never put anything on the top of it. And I've got about three pounds of mud on my car. We survived a hearing, noted that.
I heard it coming around the Fourth of July.
For sure?
Pretty certain.
If not, Tammy, pay for car wash.
I didn't even do it. Don't ever park, don't pass anybody, get on their shoulder, you'll have to get a tow truck to get out of there.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to comment on? He's going, oh, my, that's, okay, the gentleman.
Good evening. I was engaged in a spirited conversation this weekend on Facebook regarding the serious issue, of course, industrial solar. And a woman from Genesee County chimed in, and she brought forth a view that I haven't really thought about, and I thought I might share it. This is from somebody named Stephanie Brouet from Genesee County. Here's a real problem with utility scale solar, and why I think it's doomed in the long run. It's not about the tech, it's not about the massive amount of bankruptcies taking place, it's not about the subsidies and tax credits being too generous. It's about something deeper. Utility scale solar has lost its social permit to operate. For a major infrastructure project to succeed long-term, whether it's highways, pipelines, or power grids, the public has to believe it benefits them. They have to accept it as a necessary trade-off. With solar, that's not happening. The closest land use comparison might be the US interstate highway system, which was, was the cause of massive disruptions, eminent domain, and farmland laws. But highways were built because they connected people. They transformed commerce. Everyone uses them. Industrial solar doesn't offer the same benefit to the average person. You lose views in farmland, you might feel trapped, and in return, you don't get jobs, you don't even get a boat. Here in Michigan, the state is targeting two hundred and twenty thousand acres for industrial solar. That's many times the landmass of all Michigan landfills combined. And yet, these projects are being treated like passive green infrastructure. But they're not passive, they're intrusive, they're sprawl, they reshape rural life. Even if health effects, uh, health effects are debated, the mental and emotional toll is well documented. Depression, anxiety, and feelings of helplessness and powerlessness. When over eighty percent of people living near industrial solar projects oppose them, that's not nimbyism, that's systemic rejection. This isn't a climate fight or a political fight anymore, it's a social legitimacy crisis. And once you lose that, no amount of tax credits can fix it. That's why I believe solar in its current form is unsustainable. Not because the panels don't work, but because the people won't tolerate it.
Good.
I hope that board has, each one, each member has had a chance to review in detail these applications and understands all of the line items. If you do not, please, I hope that they feel comfortable in delaying their vote until they understand all of those things, they can get these things clarified, but all of the dimensions and all of the things that are called out, that it's very specific and they understand it all. I hope that, you know, the voting numbers will take that into consideration. And if you don't, you know, make sure that you do understand. And then I also hope that you are listening to the residents that are around these utility power plants. Again, it does not meet our master plan, this is not part of the development plan for this township at this point. This is a major shift in our township.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Todd and Dunn.
I just fear that we're opening up Pandora's box. If you let them come in and start this, what's to say that we're not gonna have more people come in and try to do solar, or any other commercial type thing? I know you're saying it's a special land use, but they'll have a leg to stand on to sue the township. If you let them do this, why aren't you letting us do that? It would keep it with the master plan of residential and farmland, there's not a leg to stand on. That's what the master plan is. That's why it's set, and it's sold, that that's what our area is for. And if you want to know if it's eighty percent or ninety percent that's opposing it, let's take a vote. Let's have some kind of vote, a special vote. Even if it's not like a legal vote or anything, just have a voting set up, and have people vote. Seriously, just so you have an idea of how many are for it and how many are against it, so you know what's going on in this township, and how people feel. A lot of people have given up because it seems that we're just not being heard.
Dunn, thank you.
Yeah, Tammy, I think everybody's being heard. My concern is that I've been laying here for twenty-five years. I hate all the people that are here now. It's terrible, it's only gonna get worse. And if Burma Farms does go into housing or something else, Polte's gonna put a sub in, and I'm gonna see more people here at five o'clock in the morning. So, I don't want it to change, but it's gonna change. And I think solar makes sense. Burma Farms can do what they want with their own land. Their land can be used for whatever they want, whoever has to stare at it, even with everything the DT is doing.
Not one of the future neighbors.
It's still their issue to deal with, and they're doing everything they can to make people happy. They can grow whatever they want, they can do hogs, they can do a whole bunch of other things. The bonus is, we do solar, thirty years from now, we get that land back to do what we want with.
Your state won't be working.
Please don't air up.
There is no, there's no concept that it's useless, there's nothing else going on, it's just a bunch of talk. And they have the right to do what they want with their land. If you don't like it, buy their land, why don't you start there? That's it.
Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
I just got one thing, aren't there like three thousand people in this township? When people talk about percentage of the voting, I like, if you're gonna have a vote, have a special election and see what people think. I tell you what I'm for, I'm for lights staying on. The Chinese are infiltrating our country in a lot of different ways, and our infrastructure is in poor shape. And we import our business from Canada. So, you know, I'm for all electricity, even coal. The Chinese are building so much coal plants a month, and they have coal plants out here. We need to generate electricity, and I want to keep the lights on and the costs down. That's what I'm for. And I've been doing it twenty years. And I kind of think nothing from.
No, you got more time, go ahead. Go ahead, you can keep going.
No, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the call to the public at seven fifteen. Okay, we don't have any public hearings today. So the next thing is unfinished business. I did get from Land Plan, Article eight with all signs, just for you guys to read. We don't know what Ian and Mark came up with, so I hope, I'll put that on the agenda more for July. And then the next items are the one conditional rezone for the west area, which would be Burma Farms. And then number two is a conditional rezone request from the Burma area, the south area. So, with that though, before we start talking or deliberating, we have Mr. Holmier here. He was to review Mark's review and make his comments, so you'll be on deck.
All right. So I took a look at Mark's review, I didn't really have anything disagreeable with it. I think there, and I talked to Ms. Plachis about this, that some of the conditions, I think, need, what generally happens on a conditional rezoning, which is why we're here, is the developer proposes conditions, you're free to reject those conditions, but you're not free to impose your own. Having said that, there are some ambiguities that Mark pointed out, that I don't disagree with, that need to be resolved. Those typically get resolved once the planning commission makes a recommendation on the substance of those conditions, so that when the board gets it, which they eventually will, after the county, if sent to the county for their review and comment, the board is looking at an agreement which would record those conditions against the property that is subject to the conditional rezoning if it gets approved. But at the time, the board's considering it, those, the substance of those conditions would remain the same, but the wording just needs to be clarified. Some of that has to do too with the revocation of the special use permit, which we talked about at the last public hearing. And so, I suspect Emily and I will work through that once the planning commission makes a recommendation, and then the board at least would have that agreement in front of them at the time it considers the recommendation.
John, do you want to weigh in at all?
You can write in.
Okay, okay. And then, I guess before we go on, do you want to address the number of public comments at all?
Well, whether it meets the requirements of your ordinance, I'm gonna let the planning commission make its determination on what your recommendation should or should not be to the board itself. One thing though, that I do want to remind you of is that we're not here on the issuance of a special use permit. This is just the conditional rezoning portion of this. There is an altogether different process for the consideration of the actual site plan and the special use permit if you get to that phase, but we're not there yet. This is just about the underlying zoning.
Of the land.
Of the land, that is correct.
All right, any discussion?
Chair? Yeah, just like a brief statement, it's been a long process. And we've heard a lot, a lot of comments from the public, a lot of comments from professionals, from lawyers, and it's probably one of the biggest zoning things I think the township's gone through ever. So it's, it's taken a long time to do it, but I just wanted to say before we even. If you entertain anything at all, I want to thank all the public that has so loyally come here to every meeting, taken your time in the evenings, very passionately expressed your opinions on it, and personally, I've heard every one of you, and I feel for every one of your positions. I want to thank DTE for coming here and spending so much time with this small township, and working through this arduous process that just wasn't gonna go smooth no matter what anyone did, just the way this is, so nothing personal to anybody in it, but I thank you guys for very professional proposals to us. And for our consultants that have stuck with us on all this, and guided us through this point. And finally, just from my fellow planning commission members, it was quite a process we've gone through on it. So, that's all I have to say.
It's far from over.
No, it's the first vote, I get it.
Okay, well, do, I guess I will go for, as the chair, I will say with the DT conditional rezone request from ten fifteen, amended on four oh one, clarified again on four twenty-two. That would be the Virndale Farms, that would be the west area. Do I hear a motion to either recommend or not recommend to the board, the township board? It goes to the county first, and then to the board, right? Yeah, I will send the proposal to the county to review. Regardless, if we recommend or don't, it don't matter. And just, is that really clear with everything that's discussed here, and what DTE's rezone request is? I will look to recommend it to the board. I second it.
By that, I assume you mean recommend to approve? To approve?
Approve, yes.
Yeah, with the conditions.
Right. Nice ten seconds, all in favor, or here, any nays?
I have a nay.
Nay.
So we got two ayes. So three ayes. And two nays. That would be Miller, Higgins, and Van White with a ayes, right? And the nays are Ann and Lynn and Debbie. Okay. All right. The next one would be the conditional rezone request from eleven twenty-six, amended four oh one, clarified four twenty-two, for the south area, that would be Burma Farms. Do I hear any motions? I recommend to approve it. The conditional rezone request. Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Do I hear any nays?
I have a nay.
I'm also a nay.
Aye. So the same as the first one, Miller, aye. Higgins, aye. Van White, aye. Dunn and Ford, nay. Motion's passed, recommendations to the board. And that is just the land use, that doesn't mean the other rezonings. I guess we don't have any new business. Future meetings is July eighth. We're gonna have our master planner meeting, you guys remember that, is June twenty-fourth. Wait, excuse me? Yeah, June twenty-fourth, master planner meeting, for the last, so file, go chapter, read the penises. June twenty-fourth, yeah.
Is that the seventh possible?
Yeah. Now we gotta go to the township board report, Anne is not here. Is something, is everything okay? Okay. I am nervous, I'll admit it. Anne is not here today, she's on vacation, so she left her, is only working for. And where is that piece of paper that she had? No, that's not it, no. No, it's right here. She's issued twenty-three permits for the year so far. Four of the twenty-three permits for new dwellings. In addition to the permit, she's issued five waivers. Complaints, she's had a camper issue on squirrel run that has been investigated, and campers were agreed to come to be removed by June twelfth to avoid further action. ZBA report, okay, so then I guess that's done with the, oh, no, I'm sorry, I skipped all around township board report, that's you. You have nothing else, you have a guess, okay, so then there's always administrators report. And the ZBA is the next item.
What do you think, no, you're joking?
There were three hearings that were heard on Wednesday, June fourth, and all were accessory structures, and all were approved. You guys ready? All right, it's the second call, you have three minutes to speak. You can have somebody else's time for six, just let me know ahead of time. First row, anyone? Second row? Go ahead.
I just got to tell you guys, you're in a bad spot, and I appreciate everything you've done. It's like they say, you can't please all people all the time. You guys are just, it's tough. And I'm a patriot forever, yeah, that's it. We just live with what we got. This doesn't look anything like it did when I was a kid, I'll tell you that. Anybody that doesn't want progress, there's no one way out to heaven, that's not to live. With what we got, you guys are gonna be fine.
Anyone else in the second row? Go ahead. Not to personalize anything, this is not personal towards anybody, I understand the position everybody's in. I feel very, it is very responsible of the aides on this planning commission today. That is all. Thank you. Third row?
I think the planning commission this evening opened Pandora's Box. If you want to know what Pandora's Box is, go up to Shaiwessie County. Right now, we have seven developers now, running, including DTE for both wind and solar, getting leases. And they're literally crawling all over each other and harassing residents. And so if you want to see the extent of what you've done here today, just go up there, because that's what your township's gonna look like in probably six or eight months. Thank you.
Next, we're over in the fourth row, go ahead.
I just wanted to state my disappointment with the board too. I think after all the feedback that you've heard from the residents over the past several years now, I don't feel like that decision represents the overall feeling of the township. And Pat and Alan, I applaud your courage for doing the right thing. I think this is gonna be remembered as the beginning of the downfall of this township. It's not gonna be like it is today.
Anyone else? Bill?
I just flipped you all off, so I'm just not gonna say anything.
Okay. Anyone in the back? Go ahead, your hands up.
I just want to say, I'm very disappointed as well. I can understand approving maybe one, but approving both, I feel is very irresponsible, and very disappointing, and you, I feel like everyone in the township who has voiced their concern has been completely disregarded, and that is very unfortunate that you have sold out your neighbors.
Go ahead.
I really don't want to talk, but I have to say something, that if I remember correctly, there's approximately thirty-five hundred residents in Asko Township, or Shaiwessie property owners in Asko Township. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and it's the same faces, it's the same like fifty faces generally. And yes, it's like ninety percent of the people in this room, but it is not ninety percent of the township. That would be about thirty-one hundred people. And fifty percent is less than, it's like a one and a half percent. It's very, very vocal, and I just believe in property rights. If it's legal, don't communicate what you do, and I don't want to tell you what you do, I'm with those in New York. But I think you guys have done an excellent job, and it's very great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
He can have my three.
I'm not gonna be that long, though. I think that you, most of the people up there, not all, have seriously misrepresented the township, as this young lady has said. As far as the fifty percent goes, I think if you did a survey, it would be more like ninety percent, because we've done one before in other townships. But it's a huge disappointment that you, people are not representing the majority of the people of your township. You can say it's the same fifty people here all the time, but I've been to these meetings before here, and there's been more than fifty. Okay, so, it's very disappointing, and this is. Okay, so, it's very disappointing, and this is government at its worst. That's all I got.
All right, anything else? Because if I don't see any more hands, go ahead, we're going to close the call, the second call public. We close it at seven thirty-two. All right, I'm almost done, any PC power units? I'm going to, I'll adjourn at seven thirty-two. Thank you. You adjourn. And it begins.